Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the September 29th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. It's my turn to do the dog show.
Great looking dog, too.
Did you need him at home?
Jim said, "Don't bite the dog."
Why would I bite him instead? Lori's jealous this morning. Yes, she is. This is a three-month-old black lab puppy, found around East 31st Street in Lorraine. How could you resist a face like that? Walk! Who can't see it? Look, how happy he is to be here. He just loves everybody. Available for adoption. She's in cage 24. Available for adoption this Saturday, October the 1st. And we invite you to come out and look. Oh, look at all of our pets who are looking for a home.
It's a male, buddy.
It's a male. I keep referring to where she go. Well, it's because I'm...
Look at the camera, buddy.
Pardon me?
Look at the camera.
Well, you're talking to me. It's not polite to turn your back to someone who's speaking to you. How about, you want to go home with Cordez?
It's about the size of your Yorkie, Jim.
You can eat him up.
No, it's bigger than your Yorkie.
You can eat him up. Can you sit for a minute? Here. Oh, you don't like the clerk.
Speak, good boy, good girl.
Sit, can you sit? There, oh, look at that, oh. How could anybody resist a little puppy like that? I'm bringing him home, Chuck. Thank you.
Chuck will really enjoy that dog.
I'm sorry?
She did that on purpose, Jim.
You know, I can't do anything right this morning. I haven't even started here. Oh, my goodness. There's a, I'll say this way. Three little pigs, you know, and they crap because little, whatever her name was, she said, "Somebody ate all our porridge," and the story goes, "Crab, crab, crab, I haven't even made the porridge yet."
Bears, yeah, Goldilocks, bears, not pigs, but that's okay, Commissioner. This was a deal from a long time ago.
You understood the message.
Bears.
No, three bears.
I got the message.
Bears, pigs, whatever.
Thank you, Lori.
Madam Clerk?
No, not yet. You do not get to direct the meeting to the President of the Board. It's your turn. Well, yes, I was trying to make my point, and I didn't use the correct term, crab. There was a better term. And if you don't behave, I'm going to use it. A positive thought for today from Joan Lowry, a 1989 graduate of Lorraine County Leadership, says, "Take charge of your attitude. Don't let someone else choose it for you."
Very good, Commissioner.
I like that. And Joan was in charge of last night's big band dance at DeLucas, Doc McDonald, and it was a very successful affair, and they had to put up extra tables because there were so many people there. It was a very nice annual affair. You're on, Teresa.
Amendment Resolution Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
The puppy doesn't want to leave. Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under the auditor, approve an intern to sublease agreement on behalf of Lorraine County Auditors and Lorraine County National Bank for office space at 124 Middle Avenue, Elaria. This is effective October 1st, 2005 through September 30th, 2006, in the amount of $10,450 based on a rental rate of $9.50 per square foot payable and a monthly installment of $870.83.
And at the end of this rental period, we will be ready to house these people?
I believe so. Hopefully by late spring, early summer, we'll have matured up our plans for the occupation of the rest of our building and have the renovation complete. I don't want to give you 100 percent, but I think it's reasonable to assume that we'll be able to do that.
Thank you. Also moved.
I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Commissioners, at the conclusion of our regular board business today, I would request that we have a brief executive session to discuss some potential new hires. I have a couple for Golden Acres. And I also believe that Mr. Flanagan has an issue of litigation that he needs to update the board order.
Thank you.
Authorize the release of retainage to South Shore Electric, Inc., Elaria, in the amount of $28,700 plus interest. This final payment for work performed in Lorraine County Justice Center. Unnecessary paperwork has been received.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorize County Commissioners to execute a public approval certificate in connection with the issuance of Lorraine County Port Authority of Tax Exempt Development Revenue Bonds. Lorraine County Port Authority Bond Fund Series 2005A Lumaloy Metal Casting Company Project.
Mr. Cordez?
Commissioners, really all this does is allow for the issuance of tax exempt bonds. There's a smaller nuance or requirement in the law that the county has to sign off before we can do that. And this way, the Port Authority can issue those tax exempt certificates to further economic development of Lorraine County with a loan to Lumaloy. Now, since we are now public on what we're doing, the director of the Port Authority's here, and I'd like to ask Ron to give you a brief explanation of where we're at with this. Normally, we would tell you about it once we did the certificates, but it's out there now, so maybe Ron can share some good information with us.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Is that on?
It says it's on, but it's not.
He wants gems, he doesn't need them.
There we go. I think it's on now. The switch was off. Good morning, Commissioners. With Lumaloy, we've been working with them really since about January of this year, so some of these projects take a while to move forward. The financial analysis is finished, and the attorneys have prepared, I think right now, about 200 pages of legal documents that we're reading right now. A public hearing has to be held because it's tax exempt bonds that are being requested. That public hearing will be held in the community development offices on October 14th, and following that public hearing, we'll then submit it to the state of Ohio for review and approval down in Columbus. We anticipate no problems. The Fitch Rating System has reviewed the proposed project. We're anticipating BBB-plus bond rating on this, and so soon after the 14th of October, this project and the bond should be sold, and the project funding go forward.
Now, how many jobs are we creating, Ron?
No, I was afraid you were going to ask that. I think that it was about 20 or 30 jobs, but I don't remember.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And Commissioners, this is the company that the, I think all of you can recall specifically two, were at a meeting with this company earlier in the year.
All three.
All three. And another one of those good cooperative efforts, and the board's been supporting the Port Authority, so it took a little longer to get here because of some issues on their side of the house with some legal issues with the blending of both operations. But you did actively participate and work with the Port Authority, and this is a good outcome for all of us. Also, this deal does not get into the pocket of that $3 million guarantee that you just recently passed for the Port Authority. This is 100 percent relying upon our current bond reserve fund, so we still have the $3 million capacity. We do have other companies in the hopper that are going to be queued up soon, so I wanted to make that clear, that we're not even starting that process yet, so we've got a lot of good stuff to come.
Yeah, and I would say, just as a refresher, this is a company that's presently located in Cleveland, Ohio, and it's buying an abandoned building that used to be used for a similar operation in Avon Lake, and they're relocating that and have picked up some product line or production that was from a former bankrupt Lorraine County company. So all in all, it's worked very well. Cleveland has sent a waiver letter saying that they will allow Lumaloy to come to Lorraine County and Avon Lake, so it's worked very well, but it has taken some times, as some of these deals often do.
Questions for Mr. Flining or Mr. Cordez?
No.
So moved. I'll second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Approve an interim contract between the Board of Commissioners and the National Black for the 125 cafeteria plan effective January 1st, 2006 through December 31st, 2006, with an option to renew an additional year for the next two years.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Community Development Department accept the West Branch Community-Based Watershed Strategy for the Black River and establish the price of $7.50 per copy. This report was comprised with Lorraine County and Delta Institute working with community partners, and copies were distributed to the county and partners.
And we reported on this briefly last week. Also moved. Second?
Discussion.
Were we able to get that up on our website we were talking about last week's discussion, so it can be viewed by the public?
I don't think it's there yet, but we are working towards that goal, yes.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
And it probably will be at the website, both of the county, but also there's a website for theblackriverwatershed.org. It will probably be on both sites.
Okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Support the CDVGED grant application submitted by Community Health Partners Physicians, Inc., Most Significant Bits, Inc., DBA, NothingButSoftware.com, BargainStation.com, Royal Management, Inc., and the Village of LaGrange to the Ohio Department of Development. The proposed infrastructure project will involve off-site infrastructure improvements to newly created LaGrange Business Park, including the construction of streets, water, sewer, gas, and electric lines.
Also moved.
Second?
Commissioners, I would just point out that the CIC has reviewed and approved this recommended approval to the Board of Commissioners about three weeks ago. Last week, we held a public hearing, so our department is recommending approval as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to publish a combined notice in the non-legal section of the local newspaper to fulfill the requirements of the environmental review records, and a request a release of funds for Lorraine County CDVG Formula Fiscal 2005 and CHIP Fiscal 2005 programs in addition to the City of Sheffield Lake's CHIP program for fiscal 2005. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on September 30th, 2005.
So moved. Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, adopt the Statement of Policies for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services Prevention, Retention, Contingency Program. This certifies that Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services has complied with Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 5108, and is effective October 1st, 2005 through September 30th, 2007, and Mr. Rodriguez's presence will give an update of the board's services.
Commissioners, I requested that someone come to give you some information, since we haven't talked about these things a lot this year. I thought maybe some new information or refresher information would be in order. You can either hold that to the end of your regular business, and it's about a 10-minute presentation, or you can receive it now. It's the pleasure of the board.
No, it's fine with me.
No, do it now.
Okay.
I'm Nat Rodriguez. I'm the program administrator at Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services. The program that we are asking just for the support, and it proves that we are continuing to follow the Ohio Revised Code 5108, is our Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Program. It replaced in the late '90s the old Emergency Assistance Program. We use TANF funds. It can only be used for families. What the plan consists of is how we administer this program, what income we use, and determining eligibility, who's eligible, who's not eligible in the plan. I sent you each a packet of information of different things. And then there's another part of our PRC plan is exactly the actual services that we provide. We pay for some training programs, car repair, utility bills, shut-off notices, some house repairs that if somebody is the owner of the house. And then also in the PRC plan, we're required to add other programs where the money gets passed through to us into that plan. Say for the Help Me Grow program administered by the Children Families First Council, Kinship Navigator is one of the programs. All the programs that we provide services to are OWF, Ohio Works First Cash Participants, who have to, who only have three years to be on cash assistance. Any kind of programs that we put together for their benefit to provide them training also get put in the PRC plan, along with anything else we do. They're usually a one-time, a shot at this person coming, make an application with us, we'll help them for the first time. We want to make sure they're able to meet their ongoing needs. And in the program, it's a good program because what the program does is try to prevent the dependence of cash assistance in Ohio. So if we can get somebody to help them fix their car, they'll keep working. If you can get somebody to get maybe, they need some additional classes to keep their certifications up for the jobs they're doing, and if they're all along, they have to be income-eligible. We use 175 percent of the federal poverty level to determine eligibility for the household. And just remember, this is for families. We cannot service any adults under this program.
That's it.
Any questions?
That didn't take 10 minutes.
No. I try to put it fast.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any specific questions?
Well, under Number 18, there's an increase of $97,000, and I was wondering where that money's coming from.
Yeah, that, I think Doug's here for that. That's a whole different part for us. This is, yeah.
Title 20.
Well, we spent on this program, it's an, the money that's spent on the PRC program is part of our allocation from the state of Ohio, so we're spending roughly about $300,000 on this, to operate this program.
Does Doug can answer?
Yeah, Doug can answer the other question.
I need to approve this first. Excuse me. Need to approve this first before we get to the next one?
We're not on it.
You're not on it yet. Okay, well, either way, whatever the pleasure of the board, you can approve this one, and then Doug can answer the second one there, okay?
Are we done with Mr. R. Rodriguez?
Yeah. What happens is every two years, I'm required to get the Commissioner's signature on our program.
Okay.
So I'm coming back. You have done this in the past, correct?
And if we have questions, when we can call and find out, and we have talked back and forth.
Correct.
Thank you. I'll move for approval of item Number 17.
Second?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 05561, adopted June 30th, 2006, approving an intern to purchase a service contract between the Department of Job and Family Services and Workforce Development Agency. For the 2006, we have programs and services. This amendment will increase contract of $2,901,306 to $2,998,306, an increase of $97,000 due to receipt of Rapid Response set aside allocation funding, which will be made available to serve workers who are impacted by combining Ford Motor Company and Lorraine Assembly Plan and the Avon Lake Plan.
Commissioners, before Doug speaks, let me address the $97,000. About four or five weeks ago, we submitted to the state for Rapid Response dollars to aid Ford with the transition and potential, and I say potential, of some of their workers re-accessing the labor force. Some of those dollars were for services such as counseling, and it wasn't just job training services. You know, it's a traumatic experience when you've worked somewhere for 20 years or 18 years, and you're going through the uncertainty with what your employment's going to hold, the way you're going to be working. So we felt that it was in the best interest of the community to access Rapid Response dollars, and to provide those services, and the state was able to pass through an additional $97,000. Now, that said, I've known this for a number of weeks, and I've had it on my desk, but we're working cooperatively with Ford, and they really didn't want us to do much press release on that right now because they're working with their folks over there, and we didn't have any choice but now to do this here. This is a good thing for the community. It's a good thing for what our workforce development people have done, gaining these funds for these folks. But we still don't have full engagement with how we're going to partner with Ford on the use of these funds. There's, you have the union issues over there, we have a lot of people going in gen pool, and thankfully, for some good work by various partners in the community, we were able to keep the gen pool workers in Lorraine right now over at the pain plant, at least until the end of the year, and we're working, and if there's going to be further gen pool, we're working to keep them in gen past beginning of the year. And we're also working with a company that's going to be doing parts distribution, and we're going to be keeping that distribution center in Lorraine, where maybe, the scenario would be 50 big trucks show up and 250 little trucks leave, so they would break it out at this location, and then it would take it just to where it's needed at the plant. And we're working with that, too. So there's a lot going on with Ford and with their workers, and they're very concerned also with their non-unionized workforce, because they're getting significantly impacted, a non-unionized workforce also. So they don't know where they want these dollars to be broken up yet, and we didn't want to get into a problem between union workers and non-union workers, and we're kind of leaving it up to Ford to come back with a plan, and they haven't done that yet. So once we have that, we can give you more information on that. Doug, I didn't mean to take you a thunder, if you know any more about that.
Segue into Doug, then.
Right. Doug Beckler, I'm a contract evaluator with Job and Family Services. The funding is through Workforce Investment Act funds, provided through the Department of Job and Family Services on the state level. And Mr. Cordez explained the program. I'm just monitoring and adjusting the contract to reflect the dollars so we can spend them. So it's Workforce Investment Act funds.
Okay, so this is an amendment as it states to the contract.
Is there any additional questions, Commissioners? No.
Okay, I'll move for approval. Second?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Approved purchase of service agreements between Job and Family Services and various service providers for Title 20 Social Services, effective October 1st, 2005 through June 30th, 2006. Authorized Director of Job and Families to execute agreement on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval to form for 1, Lorraine County Safe Harbor, Lorraine, for protected services for adults in the amount of $19,000; and 2, Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County for protected services for adults in the amount of $90,000.
Also moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Workforce Investment Agency, approve an intern to MOU between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, Lorraine County Workforce Investment Board, and Employment Network Partners to identify and coordinate a variety of workforce development resources to create a seamless, integrated system that addresses the needs of employers and job seekers by offering a variety of education, job training, human services, and other workforce development services to residents of the region, effective retroactive July 1st, 2005 through June 30th, 2006.
Do you have comments?
That's like asking if a river has water.
I know, but I thought it was appropriate that I ask.
Commissioners, this is the, I'm sorry that this is a retro contract. We've been working closely with the One Stop. Ms. Alexander and I have been meeting routinely with Janice Barczek and some members of the Workforce Institute Board, and the relationship is really gelling up nice over there, and a lot of information's getting put on the table. There's a lot of new cooperative spirit going on. There's a ton of partners in this MOU. We changed some verbiage in there, got some clarification, but I think that you're going to see bigger and better things coming out of WDA and the One Stop, and you're going to see a more cooperative partnership than we had in the past. Mainly, some of the problems were on our side of the house. And I'm very excited about what's going on there, and I'm very pleased with the work and the progress that we're making over there right now. And we finally got this done, and next year, we'll get this partnership agreement to you before July 1st, because we've worked out the bugs.
Beautiful.
I'll move for approval. Second?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services Department to utilize their Shell Oil Gasoline Credit Card not to exceed 200, and the agency's Master Card not to exceed 2,500 for the year 2005.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, county administrator?
I don't have any comments this morning, thank you.
Wow. I have a little bell here to ring.
Mr. Flanagan, Assistant Prosecutor?
No comments this morning, other than the executive session Mr. Cordez mentioned earlier.
Ain't your bad.
Commissioners?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you just said.
I said I didn't have any reports for the Commissioners, other than the executive session, and I go, "What?" Meeting with them.
Commissioners' report?
Commissioner Lori?
Well, I had a very productive week, but I can't tell anybody what went on, but there's a possibility of some jobs coming to Lorraine County. That's all I can say right now.
That sounds exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, more jobs, more better.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ted?
Nothing this week.
Yesterday, I went to Portage County to attend a seminar sponsored by the County Commissioners' Association, bringing the state budget into focus and targeting important issues for counties, and I gave each of you a copy of all the good reading stuff that they presented. Two or three things of interest particularly is that to date, excuse me, is the effective date of House Bill 66.[1676.23] One of the items is that today, September 29, an application fee is to be charged by the clerk of courts.
Twenty-five.
Right. Twenty-five dollars. Twenty stays in the county, five goes to the State Public Defender's Office. And of course, this fee may be waived by the court, but not unilaterally.
Now, it's an interesting fee, Commissioner, because it's for a free attorney because they have no money, so now we charge them a fee to get the free attorney, but we can waive the fee.
Not waive the court.
Okay.
Interesting. But they, well, you know, they're always out to make a little bit of money. And it was interesting the way it was explained to us. I'm just sharing information. I'm not supporting this. I'm just sharing it. They indicated that these people usually have friends, and that maybe their friends can cough up the fee. And the other aspect of it, and Mr. Justowski, I would just ask that you look into this. They said that the sheriff collects money from the inmates for the inmate fund, and that maybe we could get the fee out of that fund.
Is that the commissary fund?
Yes. That's one of the issues that was brought forward. The other is that the Demo and Construction Debris Study Committee is scheduled to give a report to the legislature on September 30, which might have some interesting things in it with respect to solid waste. And then this is just a thank you to the Board of Elections because they went into great lengths to explain the issues under House Bill 66 that affect boards of election generally and problems that existed in other counties. And I was very pleased that we didn't have those problems because we've established a very good working relationship to date with our boards of election, and those issues didn't, were not, they just were not relevant to us. And one final piece of information, I want to share my note with you, and then I would like to discuss it with you later. This was with respect to the local government fund. It says intra was irrelevant with regard to local government fund distributions for '06 and '07, that we would not receive less than in 2005 unless the political subdivisions would agree. And I made a note that you should discuss this with either of two representatives at the CCIO because our county was one of two that was mentioned that we had problems. And of course, you're well aware of those problems. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
I don't have anything for correspondence.
Move the reading be waived.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning, Elizabeth Romicks, Oberlin, Ohio. I recently went up to the Board of Elections in order to get the official listing of candidates and issues and so on, since Oberlin is planning its traditional Candidates Night on November 1. And by coincidence, really, I happened to be given a walkthrough of the new electronic voting machinery, which will be used in the county this fall. It seems on the face of it, of course, I was sort of just standing there while somebody else did it for me. I didn't do it myself. It seems on the face of it relatively simple. On the other hand, four people confronting it for the very first time on Election Day, I imagine there will be a fair amount of hesitation, excuse me, and uncertainty. In other words, slow. I understand that the Board of Elections has made a couple of presentations on the machinery and how to use it, but it would seem to me, and I know this is not your purview, but I guess I'm hoping that there will be some emphasis placed on it by a lot of people. It would seem to me very important that there be a great many exhibits of how to use that machinery well before Election Day, or we might end up again with those great big long lines and all kinds of controversy and confusion and so forth. And so I guess I'm just appealing to everybody in the county in general to get after somebody to have either a live example of how that machine is used or a videotape which could be perhaps reproduced and available in public libraries for multiple showings within the next month or so.
That's a good suggestion. I know that they were at the fair all week, and I know that they were at the Labor Day Festival, I believe.
Why don't, why don't I see if they'd be willing to come up with their machine here and we can get it televised? And then we can ask at least the college and some of the school channels to start looping that. They're always looking for filler spots. Maybe we can get something cooking here. We don't have a lot of time, but it shouldn't be very complicated to get a couple of video bites and see if we can get some cooperation. So I'll make the request out there and see if they come up here. Maybe they can do a demonstration and a show and tell here, and then we'll, our video folks here can cut the video, and then we can put trailers in. Hal, you can handle all that, right?
That's a good suggestion.
For the record, let it not be known that Hal's shaking his head yes. Thank you.
Judy Nedwick, County Recorder, did you have something this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning, Elizabeth Romicks, Oberlin, Ohio. I recently went up to the Board of Elections in order to get the official listing of candidates and issues and so on, since Oberlin is planning its traditional Candidates Night on November 1. And by coincidence, really, I happened to be given a walkthrough of the new electronic voting machinery, which will be used in the county this fall. It seems on the face of it, of course, I was sort of just standing there while somebody else did it for me. I didn't do it myself. It seems on the face of it relatively simple. On the other hand, four people confronting it for the very first time on Election Day, I imagine there will be a fair amount of hesitation, excuse me, and uncertainty. In other words, slow. I understand that the Board of Elections has made a couple of presentations on the machinery and how to use it, but it would seem to me, and I know this is not your purview, but I guess I'm hoping that there will be some emphasis placed on it by a lot of people. It would seem to me very important that there be a great many exhibits of how to use that machinery well before Election Day, or we might end up again with those great big long lines and all kinds of controversy and confusion and so forth. And so I guess I'm just appealing to everybody in the county in general to get after somebody to have either a live example of how that machine is used or a videotape which could be perhaps reproduced and available in public libraries for multiple showings within the next month or so.
That's a good suggestion. I know that they were at the fair all week, and I know that they were at the Labor Day Festival, I believe.
Why don't, why don't I see if they'd be willing to come up with their machine here and we can get it televised? And then we can ask at least the college and some of the school channels to start looping that. They're always looking for filler spots. Maybe we can get something cooking here. We don't have a lot of time, but it shouldn't be very complicated to get a couple of video bites and see if we can get some cooperation. So I'll make the request out there and see if they come up here. Maybe they can do a demonstration and a show and tell here, and then we'll, our video folks here can cut the video, and then we can put trailers in. Hal, you can handle all that, right?
That's a good suggestion.
For the record, let it not be known that Hal's shaking his head yes. Thank you.
Judy Nedwick, County Recorder, did you have something this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
I have nothing, but I-
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator and Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?